So there wasn't a presentation on the packet, but it is on your desk and Counselor Lozzon has it as well. Just here to have a visual as we discussed. Thanks, Counselor. So slide two, this is just to remind you, Counsel, the process thus far. We posted a letter of interest for applicants to begin developing proposal. That was back in September. We engaged an outside facilitator to assist public outreach and that was here to the ground. And CBRPC provided some staff support. Thankful to both. Working with Clara Key, the terrific partners, very done a work and really allowed, took this off my place so I could do other things and they, as you can see, I think from what we ended up with the trip I worked on. I want to thank both Clara for her work and CBRPC for making keep available to us during this process. We created a survey. When I say we, it was Clara and Key created a survey tool linked to the city website. But that was live from November to December twenty twenty-two. And then we hosted a public forum that was on November fifteenth at Alumni Hall. That was, we did that immediately following a regular council meeting. And it was a really well attended event. And so now we're here for the last part of this process, which was what we laid out in September. And that was the issuance of a report to counsel to be incorporated and to inform our budget discussion. Next slide. So just the forum. Thank you. Photo credit to Counsel Booth. Really great event, as I mentioned, November fifteenth, Alumni Hall. Approximately forty people attended and present online. I thought for all of you present, that was a really, really great experience and great to hear from our neighbors. And so what was the feedback from that forum? We were all there. So I think, you know, you'll check me if this isn't what you heard. But first of all, what happened was we heard from the department heads about the capital funding needs in their departments. We made available an opportunity for everybody who submitted a letter of interest by that point to attend and to have some time to present their funding requests. And then we really opened it up as an open mic session for anyone who was there present to, to say whatever they wished on. To speak their mind to speak. And we also had some opportunities for people who didn't feel comfortable to write down comments on sticky notes and put them on, on boards. So all of that, those were all the ways people were able to participate at the forum. And then this is just an excerpt from the report here at the bottom. I think far and away, the support was obviously for infrastructure and we all heard that pretty loud and clear. There were some comments on the poster boards that provided a little broader range, but if you were at the forum, I think you heard infrastructure as the number one priority coming out of that, that meeting. Slide five. So we also got feedback through the survey. There was a, so we got feedback from the survey as well. So as I mentioned, this was live from November through December, November seventh to December ninth. And really to hear from all those who lived, worked, spent time in our beautiful city. Survey was anonymous. We did collect demographic information also that we could understand how inclusive and representative the engagement process was. And we took a lot of measures to make sure that we could reach many people. For example, asked Superintendent Hennessy for the top five most spoken languages in the school district. I was frankly pretty surprised by this, but those were the top five, English, Bosnian, Russian, Spanish and Ukrainian. So we translated the survey, both the online version and the paper version into each of those for people who prefer to take it that way. And we also being responsive to the fact that many people may not be comfortable online, we made it available on paper. And my assistant Roxanne dutifully entered everything that was submitted for copy. And actually, the library did a great job. They, we got a couple deliveries from the library throughout this process. People who dropped off the survey there and they brought it to Roxanne. So a lot of the good people in the community who made sure that, that feedback was heard.
I'm just curious, how many-ish were on paper?
Oh, it was probably less than twenty, that's what I was. Yeah, yeah. And so what was the feedback? So we, we, well, actually, I'm sorry, who did we hear from on the survey? That's the, that's slide six. Pretty representative for folks, I was gonna say, let's see, from ages thirty-five and up. So young people like myself and everyone above that, well represented. And then the very, very young people, under thirty, thirty-four and under tended to be the lower represented respondents to this survey. I don't think necessarily surprising as with most things of this nature.
You don't go to websites anymore.
Instagram, yeah. I think that you have the full report. I think one piece that stood out to me was the renters significantly underrepresented in, in this survey. So just something to keep in mind, I, this was one that stood out to me when I saw the results from the, from the survey. Slide seven. So that was who we heard from and what did we hear? And this is again, you have the whole report. I'm just gonna take a couple of my, my takeaways when looking at it. Housing was, was listed as the top priorities when folks were able to list the broad categories of their top priority. Housing was far and away at the top, one hundred sixty-five, and I didn't, I neglected to mention, so we're three hundred nine responses and one hundred sixty-five listed housing among their top three priorities. If you look at the page on the report that shows the breakout, you can see visually very clearly that that was top priority. And then, not surprising, I suppose, the, amongst the letters of interest that were ranked by, by respondents, the housing-related project received the highest level of support and also visually, I think, very telling when you look at that, that part of the report. A hundred two people listed the downstreaks granted to the apartments project in their top three priorities. So what does that mean that, why are we doing this tonight? And I think that, I think three big takeaways. So we're talking about the capital plan next. You'll see that the capital plan includes two hundred fifty thousand dollars to fund downstreaks granted, screen apartments, Granite City, I'm sorry, apartments proposal, which would create nine new units. I think this project checks a lot of boxes. The total cost of this project is three point five million. And I think this is an excellent example of an applicant leveraging ARPA fund. I think this is the kind of project we're interested in supporting where we are providing sort of those last dollars to make something happen. So our, our city share here really is under ten percent for, I think, a real significant impact for, on the housing market here in the city. May, may have read in the paper that this project also received ERB approval last week. And as I mentioned, that this is, this is responsive to the survey results that we heard showing both strong support for housing generally as a policy and this project specifically. The next thing was a takeaway for me and, and you'll see also reflected in the capital plan is, you know, we had a lot of compelling letters of interest from our community, I think some, some exciting projects. We posted all those on the website. Packet, you can see it under the city manager's page online. A lot of people went through a lot of work to submit letters of interest. I think a lot of people, a lot of exciting ideas for, to make improvement. And I think those are worth investing in. And so my suggestion here is to have a placeholder in our capital funding budget to support innovation and beautification projects from among those letters of interest applicants. What I would propose is setting some guidelines and I think the main one is making sure that projects have other funding sources attached to them. And then creating a grant-like next step for those people who, who went through the process, who applied to determine which projects are shovel-ready and realistic and prepared to move forward. So we have time on this, so we, we don't have to commit the funding until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. We don't have to spend it till two years after that. So I think if there's support for this concept, that we can create a process where we can engage the members of our community who went out of their way to submit some interesting projects and help fund some of those. And then being responsive to what we heard at the forum, the proposal is to use our funding to support our capital improvement, which as you can see, I'm sure you will discuss at the next agenda item. We have many needs. In fact, we have more needs than we have resources. And I think that would be using ARPA funding to, again, leverage as much as we can, would be responsive to what we heard during the forum. So that's really it for the presentation. Happy to answer questions, but wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to review this. What we heard from our community, sort of at every step of the process and in the various means of engagement and how it was used to inform some of the proposals in the, in the capital plan that will be discussed shortly.
I'd like to start just by saying, I think you really knocked out this project. CBRPC, now all of you that have been involved with this, I think it was just a, I think it was a wonderful thing. And because a lot of people who have time to come to meetings can be pretty loud, but three hundred and nine people responding to the survey is pretty unusual in the community and it can just impulse and particularly a narrative that I think we haven't heard at a lot of meetings, whereas we're showing housing as a number one priority, repair, updated, weatherized housing stock is another number one. Increase access and affordability to increase preschool childcare education as a number one category, true year-round access sidewalks as a number one category, provision, expand recreation trail connections and maintain and improve water treatment. So I thought those were just interesting things that I, it wouldn't have risen to the top based on the other things I've heard. But this survey result shows that, that's where the circuit takers are and probably a good, good number of people in the community. Any, any questions for?
Yeah, your creation process is money needs to be appropriated by the council, that's my understanding. Yes. One thing I'd like to see is through Burn Rose, and I've been thinking a lot about this because it's not a huge amount of money. Well, you know, we do have an obligation to our citizens who are disabled. And it never really occurred to me that we don't have an ADA accessible restroom here at City Hall. And, and something as simple, I thought, you know, I thought her list was pretty modest and pretty thoughtful. You know, an ADA wheelchair swing and a pay rack is something we don't have. Well, I think those things should be a priority in the coming years. I don't know if you thought much about that.
Yeah, absolutely, Counsel Lozzon. And I think, you know, really appreciate Burns, a very, very persistent advocacy on this. He's, she's constantly on this and I think it's a really value her advocacy on, on these issues. I would add to that the doors to the hall and we don't have an accessible door right here coming in. So these are all, no, it doesn't have the.
Not the one between the stairwell.
Oh, yes, yes, the one again, right by the opera house, yeah, landing. So absolutely, those are things that, they're embedded within our capital plan. I think we're also working with Jeff to try to knock some of these off in one shot as we can. And so absolutely agree that those are, those are obligations we have.
But you've done, you've done a really good job on this. One of the other things that struck me is, you know, we just had a conversation about forty thousand or fifty percent increase. And now we're talking, which is forty grand, and now we're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when, you know, I wonder if the results of the survey weren't skewed by the choices that we gave folks, you know, I wonder, because it's interesting when they talk, when folks spoke to housing priorities, ran, they talked about repair, updating, whether it's a current housing stock as their number one priority. But we only presented them and it's just because that, that was the only choice.
Right.
Well, okay, here's this. So I guess I, I've gotta hear more about that. Two hundred fifty thousand is, as it relates to a but four thing. In other words, if we didn't provide this two hundred fifty thousand, if we provided, you know, I don't know, say, one hundred and twenty thousand and then we use the other one hundred and thirty, we created a weatherization program for low-income residents who may want to weatherize their homes. You know, would their choices have been different? And, and in the but four thing, would two hundred and fifty thousand really prevent Downstreet from moving forward with that word five housing project? I suspect not. So I just, I'm looking forward to having those kind of discussions.
Yeah, I, I think my sense is from, from the financial plan, I've seen of, of that project, which is included in their letter of interest. This is a, this is, this is two hundred fifty thousand a key part of it. And I believe is the last, geez, I'm looking at Jen, I don't know if she has it handy, but I believe it's the last piece of their puzzle financially. But that's, I, I think my sense is that if we're seven percent of a, of a major project like that, that is a, that is something worth, worth investing in. And, and also knowing that it's almost a shovel-ready as any project is, and twenty thousand per unit. So, yeah, so I just, yeah. But you've done a great job. Thank you. It's given, give me a lot, lots to think about.
So turning with the next step that was, what do you think?
No, really, the, the important part of this was to help inform why there were some, why there were some pieces in the capital plan that, that you saw, which was the Downstreet project, this set aside of two hundred thousand for innovation and beautification projects responsive to those letters of interest and then using the rest of our funding and the capital plan to fund infrastructure.
I think the next big question that City Council is getting, for many people who pulled up these forms, their request is, when will they, when will they get a decision from council?
So I think that's, it's up to, I think, council itself. I think if that's, if, if the proposal of using that set aside amount that's recommended in the capital plan is something that's supported, what I would propose doing is, is working to create a sort of a round two for those twenty-one applicants who submitted a letter of interest whereby we could nail down a little bit more of the budget details. Create some parameters for the taxi projects that we'd be interested in funding, things. And, and I just threw out one example, which is that I, I don't believe in, I don't believe that we should a hundred percent fund any single project. I think the part of the, the use of ARPA should be to leverage it. So creating parameters like that and then, for lack of a better term, running our own mini grant process and working with those applicants to make, you know, there may be some that have found other sources of funding. There are some in here, by the way, that are obsolete. For example, we funded the warming shelter already. We received funding from the federal bill for, the federal omnibus bill for some of the, etc. upgrades that are included here. And so we should go through a process and figure out which projects are realistic, which projects can leverage other funding and which looks when I take that around two with everyone.
Yes, thank you. I'm definitely echoing Counsel Lozzon's comments just about how great all of this is. Process was awesome. And yes, very true, but how many folks forgot to answer it? And I really liked the breakdown that he proposed, the overwhelming infrastructure, two hundred and fifty for the Downstreet project. I think you're right. I think that checks both boxes. It's a community-led project and it's a housing project. As far as timeline, I think we, I understand that we don't have to allocate all of it until the end of twenty twenty-four. But you know, these, I've been talking of two constituents about what we're gonna do and how we're gonna go all of this ARPA money for like eighteen months now. And I do not want to drag this thing out anymore. I'm not talking about skirting processes. I'm not, you know, trying to cut people off from asking their questions, but we've been through this process. So I think that, you know, we're gonna move on and talk about the capital improvement plan. I'm fully in support of that two hundred and fifty. I think it's really important to have that there. I think that it's a good, you just said shovel-ready and they're, they're, one of the things I get so frustrated with municipal government is, you know, we put money towards something and then it takes forever to realize. Well, we can put money towards, now those buildings are, those units are in the building. And I think that is awesome. So I would say ninety days for this round two to happen. For that, if, if we go forward with this idea that the non-Downstreet applicants can come back put in, you know, with the criteria that we'll set. And, you know, maybe we need a meeting or two to set those criteria before the ninety days kicks in. But I don't want to be having this conversation again in another six months. I think it's when the council makes some decisions, we can do that.
Yeah, if I may, I think that, that makes sense. I mean, we can, we can start engaging on criteria very quickly. We have a lead off and so that's maybe even for our next meeting, we can have an initial conversation. And I, I agree, I think, I, I certainly don't, another reason I think that's delayed is that some of these projects may be time sensitive and we want to make sure that those, that we don't lose the vote on. And then look, I, I think a lot of people went through a lot of work to get these on, but council has seen the application. Some are more thorough than others. And so I think we, we do have an obligation to do another round of due diligence for, for the people who took the time. But, but we do need more information on many of these, I think, before we progress.
I see a couple of it, it's Counsel, we will, it's Counsel, we're getting on it. They're like two dollars. Counsel Booth is a perfect, Counsel, dear.
I just had a problem trying to look up one of the applications. It was just that this, the information didn't.
Yeah, the print was small?
No, it was too big and it seemed to be out, like, I couldn't see outside the box. It was toward the very community baseball.
Oh, yeah. So some of them on the formatting were tricky. I can see, and for posting on the website, I think we were a little bit more limited in what we could do with the text field. So I can, I can try to find a way to get that one in a more logical format. I know some of the, the text was a little small, some you had to zoom in.
Which is okay, totally okay.
I just wanted to remind people that, that what we received for those submissions had been put out there as letters of interest. We hadn't put any kind of shape on what an application needed to look like or what kind of information needed to be included. So they, they run a range as far as sort of sophistication is concerned. But as, as the manager said, the next step would be to put a more formatted process in place and, and move to the next level.
Yeah, I will say that if we do an online survey, recommend doing Survey Monkey in making it so that it's IP-sensitive. Yes, no. People can, they, you can submit multiple times.
Well, one thing I would do, look with this list as we look forward, we have some projects that could clear or clearly capital improvement plan projects. We wouldn't need to put them for cycle essentially. They're asking the city to do something. There are some projects that are time-sensitive that and likely those are a little bit more vague. I would guess like the Turning Point request in the Downstreet one, sound like they're very well-developed. Eliminate, I would eliminate projects in our city I think that could come all, that weren't even located within the city limits. Or they were not benefiting a city that was located or an organization that was not located in the city. And then continue to look at that leverage of how much, see how much the requesting versus how much outside money is going to put in the project. And without making it to, I mean, for some of these small organizations, they don't have grant writing staff, they're volunteers, like, trying to get a lift elevator or, gosh, what's, I can't think of a second bigger example, but trying to make it, I mean, we had a pretty good forum. Are you thinking to be a lot more detailed for an application?
I don't think there's a significant amount of additional detail, but, you know, we want to know a little bit about how they come up with their numbers, what their numbers are, what the total project is, what other sources of revenue they may have.
I think, and I, I think that it's because there's a range of what we receive. Some, some were received, submitted by individuals working on their own, some of them organizations. So I think we need just a level playing field on the information that.
And Mr. Randy with the hand.
Manager Emeritus.
I love that stuff.
I, I did not come to see, every evening, I didn't come to see, make any comment. I'm really just interested in the process, obviously. See results. I did review, I did review the packet, but the point I wanted to remind everybody is that December twenty-four sounds like a long ways off, but it's, what's required is more than just the allocation by the council. If, if it's, if it's work that involves any kind of significant infrastructure work, that involves planning, design and more, eventually bidding, you have to have the construction contract signed by December twenty-four. So depending on the size of the infrastructure project, two years will be long enough. I just wanted to clarify that there. I'm sorry, who are you?
I just gave my, I just gave it on. You're ready to go cheat or something. I've been doing a little slur back up all day. Not the cities, man.
I know a guy.
I took a different approach. Instead of calling the city first, I said, maybe I'll call Boos.
Good to see you, Seado.
Ward major got there, if you're.
One other thing I want to do, you mentioned the Turning Point Center and, and actually, I was talking to other staff about it earlier today. We have at the moment just under forty-five thousand dollars of opioid settlement money. And, and using it to support Turning Point would be an allowed use. I'm, I have reached out to the Attorney General's office to get some more guidance about what we can use those funds for and how we need to report them and, and allocate them. So I'm, I'm thinking that would be a good source for that kind of project.
It sounds like we have an easy button.
Did I miss an email, Nicholas, or obviously I got the report within the package. Did we get a separate email with just the report?
The, the ARPA report was in the packet.
Yes, but you didn't, okay.
I don't think, I didn't.
Can I get that as just a?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And that way I can, I'll print out the whole packet and then still.
I have people.
Mr. Williams feels the same.
Reporting to Port Street.
Thank you.
It just appears.
So if I'm hearing the next steps correctly, it's looking into the opioid settlement money as potential for nexus with the Turning Point project. Some of these items we're gonna talk about in the next agenda item. And then staff's gonna think about the, the process for bringing those back. And I think Counsel Lozzon could mention the timeline within ninety, like trying to look back in ninety days.
Ninety days, like what? Establish your date. I'm not saying start in ninety days now because I want the manager and the clerk to huddle and figure out what the criteria should be. Anybody else can huddle? So basically.
All right, now, big item, capital improvement plan.
Here's one for you.
Yes, and there's, if anyone up here would like hard copy of, planning how to build any figures. All right. If, if someone doesn't take one.
Well, well.
Yeah, Tom already has one.
You can have one, you can have mine. I have a digital copy. I don't do, I do it in paper when children.
So start with the overview presentation first on the screen in the packet. So slide two, this, this is relatively new for all of us. But so what does the charter say about the capital improvement plan? That's just stated out there in slide one. Section four oh six, preparation division manager after consultation with department heads. Uh, I think we meant that part of the, the consultation with the department head, pretty much everyone here will say, uh, maybe overkill that. Shall submit a proposed five-year capital improvement plan to the council at least three months prior to the end of meeting. Contents, uh, the capital expenditure plan shall include those four items, which is the clear narrative, some of your needs. A list of all capital expenditures to be proposed for the next five years with appropriate supporting data, actual cost estimates. Methods of financing, necessary time schedules for each improvement, estimated annual cost of operating and maintaining the facilities to be constructed with fire. Provision and update, the above plan should be revised and extended each year to reflect progress for projects still. So, uh, this was a, a peculiar ask, we started this, um, in slide three, uh, really, it started before I got here. In June, uh, with the engagement of public advisory group to assist with the development of this plan. In July, um, we had a site visit, uh, to go through the capital needs and one-on-one meetings with department heads. From August through September, uh, we were deep in development of the draft plan. Uh, as council recalls, we had a draft capital plan presented to the council, uh, I think at our October fourth week, if I remember correctly. And then, uh, since then, November and December, we've been refining it, um, with all the department, the department heads and making sure. We have, uh, cleaned it up as much as, as possible, and, uh, here we are today, uh, with the, the presentation. So just a couple of, um, of notes, um, here on the next slide. For a little context setting, um, so we, we are in a situation where we're trying to address a lot of. Must do's, right? So we have a lot of end-of-useful life assets. That are all in need of very desperate urgent repair and many of them are happening around the same time, that, you know, root spoilers HVAC. Generators thing that we, we need to have. Particularly in DPW, um, we are also at a point where we're reaching end of, uh, useful life for a lot of the heavy equipment. That our crews, uh, use and that they use to keep our streets clean and clear, uh, things like the piles and dump trucks. Um, you haven't been to the DPW garage, I encourage you to do so to see, uh, the condition of some of those trucks and some of the magic that, uh, our, our staff. Do to, to, to use them. Many of our, um, revenue generating assets are also in need of major upgrades. So the odd, which again, we're extremely grateful for the, the Sanders money, uh, and the BOR. So these are, um, may fall to the bottom of some priorities, but these are, these generate a lot of revenue. These are the, for many people, the only sources of, uh, entertainment and exercise, I think, I, they're important assets to the community. And they need, um, they need upgrades to continue to be, uh, useful, accessible assets to the community. Like many other cities, um, we just have a lot of, uh, old infrastructure under the streets that we don't see. That are desperately to prepare, uh, things like our water main lines that our crews are working on tonight, uh, sewer water, uh. Sewer water wastewater treatment facilities, uh, so this is not unique to Barry, but it's, it's also, um, it's catching up. And, uh, I think, I, uh, I think I mentioned the last time, we, we've all, these, these things are no longer hypothetical. I think we all probably saw what happened in Jackson, Mississippi this summer, groundwater running through the sink, this is happening. Across the country and, and it's just not, uh, there, it's, it's not something we can look past anymore. But we've kicked a can, the can can go, can go no further, uh, than we are now. So really, the bottom line is, a lot of our focus here in this plan is on the must haves. We are prioritizing a few nice to haves, but really, we are in a position where. You know, I hesitate to say mandatory, but we're really, we're really trying to focus on the things that are at failure or about to fail and that we can't afford. Beyond that, uh, we put a specific focus, the charter said the five-year plan, what we did is we threw, we, with the department heads, we asked them for everything. So you'll see here the projects out into the twenty thirties and beyond, um, and then we put a specific focus on. FY twenty-three to twenty-five, um, and that's just so that, uh, frankly, one reason, so it didn't become overwhelming. Um, and we had a, an achievable, uh, list that we could get started on. And two, uh, was so that, uh, we could align it to this, uh, era of unprecedented, uh, federal and state funding. Where we might be able to, to make sure we're, we're focusing on the things that, that urgently need a, a touch. This is a, I'm sure you noticed this, but, uh, it is a, a hole and we, I recognize it. This doesn't include a dollar amount for the DPW facility, it's not because we don't need a DPW facility. It's because we, uh, we heard from the council that the estimates that we received are not, uh, possible. But we also don't know what a, an alternative realistic number is, and so at this point, uh, I think I would be. Quite literally picking a number out of thin air, uh, and I think that probably sets, uh, an upper expectation for just about every stakeholder. If I did so, so it's not a forgotten, uh, need, it's obviously a huge glaring need. We just are at a point in that project where we don't have a, uh, not even a, uh, guesstimate at this point, uh, for what that might look like. So, next slide, um, so we, uh, as I mentioned, we, uh, had a draft CIP in October. If you cared to look at it line by line, I had found a lot of changes, we've done work with the department heads to really refine. The descriptions, the dollar amounts, the years, so there are a lot of small changes embedded here. But I really want to talk about the big ones, the first, um, you already, uh, know about, um, which is the two hundred fifty. Thousand dollars set aside for down-streets, granted city of purpose project, and then the two hundred thousand dollars, uh, set aside for the innovation project. So that's included here, we've also included, um, a line, annual allocation to expand capacity. Uh, and so this funding would allow us to have project management assistance, contracting support. Because we are, we are looking to take on a lot of work here, uh, and while. Part of our development process with the department head was to tell us what you could realistically do and manage. I think we know that, that they were, they were being ambitious because that's the kind of department heads that we have. This need is baseline in the project and the capital improvement plan because I, I just think, uh, it's probably a need that's not going to go away. If we're ever in a position where it doesn't, we can take it out and that would be great, but, um, for now, we're, we're just baselining this as an annual allocation. To make sure that we have, um, appropriate capacity to help us implement, uh, a lot of the ambitious thing we want to do. Uh, and then a couple more slides, uh, slide six. We, this is, uh, just a graphic representation of, uh, the capital and equipment, uh, plan. Uh, the capital and equipment, uh, plans, so this is the, basically the, the general, uh, everything that's not enterprise. Fund, um, as you can see here, the bars are the, um, capital and projects, equipment needs and the gray line are the resources. And there's some obvious gaps there, um, and the, the deltas, for most of those years, you can see that the resources are much lower than the needs. Obviously, a huge spike in fiscal year twenty-six and that's driven by several, um, high-cost, uh, streets projects. And, uh, includes, uh, bridge replacement, um, and two pertaining all upgrades. That really, uh, is a, is an outlier, um, and obviously we have to, um, that, that'll be a challenge at, at that point. The first year, uh, you can see there's a, an excess in resources. And that would likely would happen in that situation is we would either try to pick on new projects, which we will funding to try to address some of our out here.
Are going down because of.
So, yeah, there's a huge spike in year one because of the, that's the Sanders, uh, omnibus allocation that's reflected. Um, so that's why we have a, a big, uh, gap in here, a positive gap. As that money goes away and as ARPA further goes away, basically what, uh, we're carrying through in that flatline condition is our. Estimates for local options taxes, um, and our annuals, uh, streets, um, ballot. Uh, and John, is there anything, I think those are the, the only, in those out years. We have some assumptions of some unspent bonds in the first two years, uh, those are time limited, so those also cause that gap to grow. But it's primarily ARPA, uh, ARPA and now the omnibus money.
But you don't, you don't deficit spend until the third year, is that correct? You were, you're, you're just spending the two, give or take three ninety-one. In the third year. So realistically, with the elimination of some projects, you could. You could meet the needs of the whole city through two thousand twenty-five. With the funds that we have now with some reallocation, but, you know, twenty-six is a. You know, I mean, it does take your breath away when you see it, but, you know, I do see a path forward to. Getting the city through twenty-five and then, I mean, you know, we all have eyes, you can see that twenty-six is just not. Right, it's going to require, you know, it's going to require. Either a lottery ticket or.
Absolutely right, a- and I think, and this doesn't, this also doesn't count, um. Leveraging our, right, we're, we're trying to be conservative in what we're assuming. Obviously, the best case scenario, the expectation is that every, that we can, uh, turn dark by dollars, multiply them however full we can. So that doesn't assume that, this doesn't assume some grants, uh, again, just to, uh, to be conservative. But you're absolutely right, Council, and the, the first three years look very doable and that's thanks to the, the federal resources that we have. Things start to look challenging, uh, when you get messed up.
But I have a question regarding the local options stacks and the figure that we have placed into the summary. Just another week to talk about last year, uh, when we put local options stacks on the ballot. The seven hundred to nine hundred thousand dollar range, but then we also talked about, I think it was thirty percent of the state was going to take up.
Yeah, this is net.
Okay, so I wasn't sure, because I see the, the nine hundred and. Seven twenty, seven twelve and then nine hundred thousand, so I'm just, so we're looking at. Making more than what we had anticipated.
Well, what, um. What we had anticipated, what was talking about the seven hundred thousand was the sales tax component. We're already bringing in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on the rooms, meals and alcohol component. So this reflects the entire.
Okay, thank you.
And then, um, one, uh, slide seven, um, is, uh, same. That except for the enterprise bond in here, um, this is also showing a positive gap in year one, that's all, that's because the, uh. The other, I would say less talked about, uh, omnibus bill is the three O T, three O two main replacement and that's reflected here as well. So we see a, a positive gap here, the revenue line ends here because we just don't have the out years, uh. Sewer water rates, uh, agreement, so that's why that looks a little funky, um, but again, similar picture, um, looks. Quite achievable on the first three years and, um, we have, uh, we had challenges, uh, through after that.
About these charts that I think is really helpful for counselors and department heads is when we're talking with our delegation, our senators, our state rep. You know, we're getting about one forty, one fifty in state highway. For V trans to maintain a heck of a lot of infrastructure. And, and, uh, I think we, this helps us be able to put, uh, dollars to projects and explain. Carrying the state highways and all the infrastructure on them is, uh, maybe beyond.
It is. And, uh, final slide, I think, um, so, uh, really our next step here is we feel very confident. Uh, in working again through, and as I said, we overkilled the consultation with department heads line in the charter, I definitely complied with that. We're going to begin implementation of plans, uh, to make, make sure that, you know, are we going to get this done? And that was a big part of, uh, when we looked at twenty-three to twenty-five, we homed in on that, uh, and so that's, that's that next step. Now those, the, we need the actual plans, the contractors, uh, who's going to be doing this work and, and getting those things out the door. We have, I think the other helpful thing about the chart is that it gives us a, a real target about the external funding mayor, as you mentioned. For what we need to start addressing, um, and, and also. Part of that's also going to be figuring out how many best leverage those ARPA dollars is, again, the plan assumes just the dollars, we have enough dollars we, we could get. By leveraging and then, um, really the, um, creating and, and making sure, creating sustaining. The capacity in-house or externally to, to, to get this done. Uh, and so part of that is recognition that we need, uh, resources to do that and that baseline here in this budget. To help us with project management, uh, and then just being smart about how we, uh, combine contracts bids. Which eat economies, um, so for example, a lot of the conversations that we had with the staff was. We need to do roofs, that, how many buildings, all of them, probably, can we, can the same contractor do? This roof and the, along the hall roof and the wastewater roof, and sometimes they can and sometimes they can't. And so those are the kinds of things that we can get someone to do both of them, that, that helps us, even if that project, you know, and that's why it's important that. We're going to try to stick to this as much as we can, but if we have, one of the things we talked about was, we have a roof project right outside the window of this plan. But we can do it with the same contractor and we get a, a good price for it, that is something that's worth, uh, being flexible with. And so, um, we just are in a position where we have to take advantage of those opportunities. So those are our next steps, um, and, uh, really just, again, thank you to the folks in this room who were. Put through a lot, uh, to get to this, uh, product, uh, including clerk who, who joined us for this, even though she has no.
Yeah, so just starting by saying how awesome this is, um. I hate to be this person, um, but just to add in one more thing that I didn't see in the spreadsheet, um. And this could, I'm just thinking about this, not, this doesn't have to live in the capital improvement plan, I'm just also thinking of this in terms of ARPA as well. Um, and I hate to suggest spending money on ourselves, meaning the city council. But I get so many complaints about the quality of the audio and I think it, it's a combination of multiple factors of. Some members of the council could use their diagram a bit more and speak up, I think, but, um, you know, some of this equipment is also. Um, so, and, and I think, you know, like, it, it, millions and millions of dollars here, because you find twenty thousand dollars for like some better audio equipment.
So I hate to just. You know, ruin the surprise, but we are in the process, we have purchased two speakers that are going to go in, on these walls to. And make these microphones project into the room and will also project to the Zoom, so. You ruin the surprise coming. No, that was going to be needed for the, the, the Zoom option, but, um. We have, we have the speakers in-house, uh, ready to be installed for in, in rooms, in-room, uh, audio. We have, the IT guys got to take care of that.
So in the public works facility, what's the, what's the next step to determine, get to a realistic number, what's going on there?
So, uh, Bill and I have, uh, we're executing in, uh, our next round with Fanwell. And, uh, I think we've heard, uh, loud and clear that, uh, the proposal that we had was just not feasible. I think on a couple of levels, the cost and the land. Uh, and so, um, part of what, uh, we're going to be working on with them was like, is a re-scoping of, of what that looks like. And, uh, getting to a realistic, um, solution, a- and, and I, you know, was there last week with the crews and. Genuinely, uh, shocked that they have to work in those conditions and, uh, thankful for what they, they do, uh, in that, in that building. But, uh, really it's about re-scoping to, to get to, uh, something that's, um, realistic. And, and achievable in the short term, I, I, I really don't think that, um, it can wait for, it can wait, uh, much longer.
So really, when we're thinking about that chart, it'd be about. Probably twenty-four, twenty-five, there may be another big spike that might implicate some bonding.
Right, exactly, right, and, and that's, that's exactly right, and, um, and that's one of the, one of the tools that we do have for addressing those gaps. Is the, is the bonding and, and I think that's a realistic, uh, final solution for that, that sort of, what is, what is going to happen.
Any other questions, comments?
Next step for the money that we have in hand for the Eastbury Transmission Line and the onshore. Nice job, pretty aggressive, you know, even in terms of timing.
You know, it's the auditorium, so probably winter months when. Or spring, when we're folks seeing the basketball tournaments, probably wouldn't be. The opportune time hitting it just after that, or right around town meeting day. With the work, it seems like it would be, so I'd just like to hear your thoughts on the implement table.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, thank you, uh, Council, so um, we've been, by we, Janet, uh, Janet, uh, myself. Been in touch with, and Joe, uh, been in touch with Senator Sanders' office. Uh, really on the odd money, uh, I know, uh. Bill can, I feel, uh, we have spoken less about the three O two, but it really on the odd, uh, has been our our first focus. Um, and we understand that uh Sanders' office themselves was getting uh some reaching from USDA uh earlier this week. Uh, and so we're expecting to have some, we have some questions for them, uh, that we asked them to get clarification on. One of them is, one of them was um. Actually, the timing of the of when the funding has to be spent, which is the application when it was submitted. May or June, whatever that was, required us to be, to spend it all down by September twenty-three, which may not be realistic, so we want to understand. Since this did now. So much delayed on the federal side, what kind of runway do we have on on our end now, so that's, that's one. Um, we're uh trying to understand with them uh the the scopes of the projects and try to get some rules on. Um, what some of the contracting is gonna be so that we can do some of that that uh pre-work to get contractors like that, so. We expect to hear more from um Sanders' office soon about uh those questions we have. Um, and and really, we're al- alarmed and concerned to hear about that September timeframe, hopefully, we have a little bit of a longer runway. Uh, to to use those resources. Thank you.
Hey, what's up, Will?
I was wondering how you decided which streets need to be paved, and what was the assessment of that? Not that I have people in my board who are complaining about those. But I didn't.
So so for the record, I'm related to the directly, well, first, our current city. Uh, the the way that the existing list was prepared was to take um what had been a twenty-year cycle. Twenty-three-year cycles and original uh. Inception and to take that and extend it and then to look at water and sewer. Needs. And so where I had to do capital improvements in water or sewer. Because I was ripping up the screen. That meant those streets went into the pavement program. And and so probably um. Most of the weighting factor in what streets are going to be paved. Are direct result of water and sewer improvements. There are some exceptions that we introduced um in. Twenty twenty-one. Um, for the FY twenty-three, and and that was to add some streets that are only getting overlays. Um, and so there are two streets that are planned for overlays. One major one that is, uh, but River Street is is planned for overlay. And and Upper Beckley um between Third Street and Bearcat Line. Um, again, because of um the condition of those roads, and our cloud drivers tell me. Which ones jar their key, um, so we're on breaking equipment. We're looking to make them a priority. Um, the need that we have is. Is much greater than the funding that we have, and so um. There are dozens of streets that need attention. That can't get attention right now. Um, you know, some that come to mind, Elmer, Aaron, um. It's not Barfield, Granite and Blackwell, um, all come to mind as something that. Um, if you didn't have to traverse them, you probably wouldn't miss the experience. Not, so so what guys, most of it is trying to put together the three programs into an integrated program. And then the second part is I'm looking at what gives us, I'm gonna characterize it as the the greatest bend for a block, which are typically higher. Tracking count streets. And I hadn't ever thought of adding in tire claims, but after this past week, I'm considering that, so. I think the system itself needs to be improved. And and so um, we're looking at trying to develop a simplified pavement management system. Something that could actually take every street. Do a quantitative index. And then lay some of those other factors over that, but um. Paper management systems actually address a number of features that. We aren't looking at, um, I mentioned there's a street that's not in the plan. That's a major one, and that's North Main Street. Um, North Main Street is six years old, and any type of that payment management program. We shouldn't have been looking at that for another nine years. Um, so we should have had some pavement cracking, but we did it really there. Um, the base portion of the fill, we don't have cracking. But we literally worn through the top. Three and a half inches of pavement. Um, so I have three and a half inch deep puddles. Life of North Main Street, um, we're going to reach out to the state. And ask them what their plan is to address their, the short flaw in its durability, because um. North Main Street alone would consume about three years of our payment budget. If we had to make that correction, it's that dramatic. Failure. So, so I'm. Looking away from North Main Street, looking for small alternatives, grinding drainage. Into pavement rather than pavement.
Is that? Yeah.
There's enough um relief in the cross section with Main Street that if we went to each of the crosswalk areas where this all down. And ground from the ruts over to the edge of the street, that we can drain. The ruts into the existing drains as. Um, we already own the grinder. So we're we're actually looking at, how do we decrease the depth of the puddles, um, because if if you're a pedestrian on North Main Street. Um, truly, you back away from the street right now whenever anyone goes by, um, because the pavement has. And and it's not traditional running with a pavement. Um, fatigues and changes is true. This is literally just worn off. Which pavements aren't supposed to have.
So it happens because? Oh, we don't know.
Oh, we don't. In two thousand and fifteen, I let the National Passport to Deal with Petroleum Industry over um the formulation of asphalt. And. One of the things that that happened is that um the petroleum manufacturing process had changed so much. That what was an asphalt in nineteen ninety. And actually stuck together. In twenty fifteen, it met all of the physical performance standards. And failed in three years, and we took pictures from all over the country. And at the time, um, recycled engine oil was being added to really hard asphalt, so then we're able to get more. Energy products out of it, and you got a much harder black. Material out of it, and it was too stiff. So if you just put a little grease in it, add some engine oil, it would test the tests. And it literally falls off, rolls off, and and the monkey rounding up was a perfect example. Um, within three years, you could actually see um one sixteen to one eight inch. Ball of asphalt with, I'm buying advocate, and so again, there's a fix. Virgin asphalt wearing horses. Which is something that's gonna be, that's next payment. The.
What was the the last part?
So, so um, right now.
We're getting, I apologize, but I am curious about that.
The bottom line, there are some methods of paving that I can help us. But nowhere near the explore the ground program.
So since city councilor, you probably give more questions about paving. So on, or anything else. Yeah, when the street time and the rehab and overlay uh attached to place, so uh, no. Uh, pending everything else, or you know, coming together, Corey Street. Allen Street sidewalk, Newton Street, Nelson Street. Beckley. Uh, when that's up, Rebecca referred to Woodland Drive, and then he said there, you may. Uh, look at North Main if there's some state aid for that.
Again, I think the state aid is essential for North Main, otherwise what we're looking at is is damaging people, um, and causing it to drain.
But one, one thing that I remember from the municipal plan is that, you know, we've, you know, been underfunding the baby budget, um, I think a lot of people noticed it. Um. I I think a a challenge for potentially next year's C I P is finding ways to. Or or with an inflexibility available within next fiscal year. So it's a double if you can, and and I said that, looking at that, I'm seeing a lot of projects that seem to have. There could be the possibility to be combined, and almost look at it to me, like, uh, looking at the paper streets. Policy, complete streets, policy, road standards, to me, that's one. That's one project following, you know, that you would do after you've done. Um, like bike path planning or the 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 active transportation plan. Bundle those plans again, and then work on do the policy work. Um, and I'm, and I'm, that's just an example, I see other opportunities where it seems like multiple projects. Could be bundled and save some money, um, but get the same deliverables.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely right there, and I think one, we we we, uh, that was another big part of our conversation, I think what we did, and I'm looking at Don and Janet. For a lot of those, uh, we've left the items as individual projects, we we downsized the budget amounts. Uh, thinking that they could be uh combined, but absolutely, that's that's part of the the strategy, especially when we have. Thematic either study that that we believe we can get to one.
Counselor, stop, Will.
I don't, I've looked, I've read the planner, but I don't remember if this is in. With the work box school being renovated, the part of Humboldt that that faces the street is beautiful. Part of Humboldt that goes, that connects to Little Street. I mean, I, you know, what do I know? I can't, I can't imagine that lasting more than a couple of years. Cause it's already, it does that thing that sort of crumbles apart.
So so it's it's um essentially a failed pavement condition. And the next stage after that is it breaks into little chunks and flies off. Um, so it's not on here because there's still an alternate route, which is Belvedere Street.
Right.
Around. And so there's a way to traverse that, um, number of homes that are actually on that street is really very limited. Um, and so even even of those, at least um two of them. Can literally, instead of going down the or over the rough section, can go across and take Belvedere, so. There are, there are ways to limit the travel on that street, um, not that it shouldn't be addressed, but only that. Because there's an alternate route, we haven't raised.
And do you, do you think that there is, if crosswalk wants the renovation is completed, so that people can pass platform, or not so much?
So again, because of the configuration of that intersection, um, a crosswalk is actually very important. Um, where we place it, um, we actually should have some design work. Done to figure that out, and give us the site distance. Coming up Blackwell.
Can't see.
And and where it meets Belvedere at an at a cute angle is really difficult, likely the sidewalk goes. Past that point, just to protect pedestrians, but we really could have some some planning and design.
Thank you all so much.
Another question, what council? Well, it's huge. This is such a huge accomplishment and a big word, thanks that everybody. Uh, the time that they're. I think looking forward to next year, it would really be nice if council could have an opportunity. Um, to to play a part in someone's scoring based on what we hear is concerns from uh constituents. And some of our our policy priorities, particularly when. The studies um that would lead to policy development ordinances. Um, and I I think it'd be really helpful to be able to see project sheets with funding sources for each project, because uh, certainly like there's. Some projects that might move forward. Where you say, well, if we get this grant and we'll do this, and we'll commit money to it, but if we don't get the grant, maybe it's not that big of a priority. And it helps, I think it helps. Give the public indication that this project can move forward if if these things are coming together. And just the harder look at some of the things that appear like they're, they could be combined, like. The paper streets policy, company street, road standards, access management policies, seems like that can be great in one project, it does opportunities. Any other feedback? This big first capital plan?
I'd just like to say that this part, this whole process has been great, it's so nice to have this public improvement plan, to understand what goes into it. I'm interested in where we're headed, it's terrific. And really thank everyone for their work, I think it's great work.
But one more? Yeah. Well, two more, actually, well, we gotta do a discussion about.
So I would just make a motion to put the requests for um the. Washington County, Manhattan County, and the people's helping, you know, give them a second, and I'll second it. I'll make the motion to put those to organization.
Hello, can I make them separately?
Sure.
Put it out on.
Oh, okay, yeah, so first a motion. We'll do that in a second, uh, motion to put Washington County Medical Health's uh request on the ballot.
There's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor, or any just, uh, yeah, all, any further discussion, all right. In my sequence, I'm here, hearing, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed. Yeah, I have it. Next one.
Motion to put the ballot request of the people's health and wellness plan in on the ballot, second.
There's a motion and second, and a further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed. Same. Guys have. Extension of it. And that takes us to a budget.
No, uh, before we move, I think Heather's just saying thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay. Uh, motion. There's, like, we can, I mean, I'm happy with this process, make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I can do.
How about that? It also. We can, we know, well, this is the second, they're discussing.
Okay, yeah, you know, are we gonna give a little more time? I mean, we had. An hour of twenty of December, and then we do, do work, good work, I do.
I'll, I will.
And I'll even do it on my overtime during the day, but we had until the thirty-first of. January, but honestly, I do have. You know, a question, like even with some of the income items, um, you know, to enable the level of funding for. Uh, the state highway aid. When I spoke to the administration today, they indicated that. The state highway should be in excess of. What? Easily in excess of what was just audited, the fiscal year just audited, and yet. We were fifteen or twenty grand short. Of the, so I just, you know, just.
Well, let's stick to.
Yeah, I imagine, I I think.
Do I do it now?
Let's do the presentation.
Tell me, yeah, it's.
Do the presentation.
About two hours worth, ready to go.
Absolutely, I don't have to be anywhere.
Um, so the presentation.
One second. I just wanna, for minutes, I wanna make sure Council Boot and you withdrew your.
Sorry, guys, so um, that's the, we're putting anybody else from like slide. Two. Um, so we. We had a lot of time, I would argue, uh, throughout throughout this process, so this actually lays out the seven individual opportunities that we have to develop our budget. We started in on September twentieth with the kickoff, where we asked for the council's uh. Guiding guardrails parameters for what we should work on at the staff. Uh, on October eighteenth, we started going through individual department budgets, where we divided line items of those uh. Uh, offices there, uh, asked for counsel question, feedback, uh, so forth, we did that, uh. October twenty-fifth for police and fire, November first for planning, permitting, assessing. Buildings and community services and recreation, uh, November twenty-ninth for public works, engineering and our revenues, uh, December sixth, we had a partner organization. December twenty, and we had a budget seminar at Alumni Hall where we were expecting to uh have, we were there ready to be all night. At dinner, um, so we've had quite a, I think, thorough, engaging um. budget process where council has an opportunity to see both individually and in totality the budget on several opportunities and had those staff on December 20th to answer any and all questions at that time. A lot of these slides you've seen before. So slide three, you've seen this one several times. The bottom line here is that we were facing really, really challenging conditions. And we were given, I think, a really tough task and our team did some financial jujitsu to get to a really responsible landing spot. Slide four, these are the, we started off with tough conditions and they pretty much got mostly tougher. We had a loss of $57,000 in ambulance contract billing and the ridiculous process that we had to confront. A couple of positives, we are having increasing pilot agreements with Castle. And again, I think Sue were, were working with us on that. And then we had an anticipated increase from the state on the pilot program, on the pilots, which was helpful for our budget and helped our projections for. Slide five, you've seen this one several times as well, so I won't go on it. But the main picture here is that on top of the very, very budget conditions that we started with and on top of the challenging changes that happened after we started, we were already digging out of a, out of a big hole because of the flat budgets in the early COVID years, which left us with an artificial low base. And if we've been, if the budget had been growing predictably at 3% since that by 20, we would have been starting over a million dollars higher than we did. Slide six, so we went through a really, a really great process with the department heads. Asked them to do some really difficultly thinking about all of their budgets. We identified two, almost $290,000 in positive adjustments. By positive, I mean cost reduce or tax saving adjustments, I would say. 227 of those were in cost reductions efficiencies in the estimates. And $60,000 were in revenue raisers, so almost $290,000 total, where every department was impacted and felt a little bit of pain in that to make some decisions. Slide seven, we allocated back some, some investments to our department heads to restore some of those big cuts that we'd asked them to make. That just describes the process. We set a floor for every department and then allocated the rest proportionally. As I mentioned, on the 20th, when we did a budget seminar, really proud of the way our department had invested those restoration, I think it's really telling of where their priorities are. And really, I'm just proud of where we put it back. Slide eight, this was the last piece of our budget conversation, which we had a little bit more of today. The three big outside entities we found, their requests and what we proposed. So that was the last sort of piece of the puzzle. So where are we today? So we, we're at, and actually we have a slight change. We were notified earlier today that Washington County taxes will increase a little bit higher than the projections from 40,419 to 43,569, about $1,900 higher than we had initially projected. And that's driven by, I understand that the new sheriff made some staffing requests that have been granted. So a little bit of a change since we prepared this on Friday. But we're looking at a 4.03% increase in expenses, a 4.85% projected tax rate increase. And again, heavy, heavy emphasis on projected. As you all know, that number will be impacted by many, many factors between now the tax rate will officially be set next year or later this year. And really just the bottom line, this is a very responsible budget. This is below what many other municipalities are projecting now. I understand that those things will change. And it also provides for some manageable increases in non-tax revenues that hopefully will continue to grow. So I would, I would also say, I'm happy to discuss, we have everybody here. And we're happy to discuss any final questions that come up. I think we, we provided a lot of opportunity for that and held a budget seminar as well for that. But I asked department heads to be here today because I think it's important for us to move forward. The budget takes up a lot of oxygen out of the room for the work that we do. And I think we've landed at a very responsible place to take to the voters.
So first question is line 73, $140,000.
Uh, correct. Why was that, we received 158,000 in our last fiscal year? The administration is projecting that number is going to go down. The contrary, they're expecting it to go up in the current fiscal year. And yet, we instead of budgeting, say 160, we budgeted 140. Was that just a revenue hedge or?
Don, I think that's right. I think we're being, a lot of places, we're trying to be conservative. We'd rather be in a, in a situation where you have a positive change rather than a negative change. And a lot of these numbers can swing either way. And so in a place where we can be conservative, we, we weren't and.
You know, most of it amounted, I mean, most of my questions amounted to changes that, you know, all people with about $50,000 in scope for the budget, but we spent an additional 13,000 and put 40 on the, yeah. So, I mean, you know, we can, we can do this now. I'm happy to go line by line or just give my questions to you.
This is more than a few. I think we should do it tonight. We're prepared to do it tonight. We're prepared to do it the 20th. I ask people to be here.
Okay, the $149,000 that we transferred from the general fund back in August, why didn't we do it in August?
Or which transfer?
The debt reduction.
The enterprise value. Yes, that was which is realized as savings in 2023.
Right. Why didn't we do it in August when it was close to December?
I think it was a big part of our savings plan. It was $15,000 of the $287,000 that we had identified. And part of our strategy was to go through departments by departments and where there were high impact. That was, that was a high impact savings and also it's another saving that required independent approval of the council. And so if we were going to be at a point where we weren't going to get that authorization we needed to know at that point so that we could identify an additional alternative saving of $50,000.
How would you save $50,000 on a $149,000 loan?
It was the debt service payment, I believe.
That was, we've been doing 15,000 was interest.
How much?
Every year, 15,000?
15,000, 15,000?
Yeah.
We charged 10% on interfund debt?
No, it wasn't that much. Not sure what the interest rate was.
Oh, the interest rate? No, that was the principal.
That was the principal?
We were making $50,000.
Okay, but it's interfund.
It's.
Yes.
So how is it tax savings if it's an interfund borrowing?
Because it's going from the general fund to enterprise, so it's going out of the general fund.
Right. So instead you transferred $149,000 that could have gone into this budget in the form of tax savings because you wanted to save.
We did because that was a fund balance use and we believe that the savings to the budget of $15,000 for the next 10 years were worth the use of the, as opposed to tax savings, which generated very little savings to individual taxpayers in the city when applied to their tax rates.
And just to remind, remind you in history, we discussed this, we made a decision, a decision of council's final.
I can talk about whatever I want to talk.
I know, I'm just.
I am.
I'm just reminding you that council.
My memory is excellent. I remember all the way back 10 years prior to when we sold it to the voters. So I have a great.
Next question?
Next question, I'm still on this one.
What's your meaning?
So I guess, so what would be, so if we had not done that, what would the savings, the savings on this budget have been? 150,000, right? In terms of the tax rate?
Right. We take away then 15,000.
And on a percentage basis, it would have reduced that 4.85 or within?
I don't know. Doc may be calculated, but the decision was to use on the fund balance to create a 10-year, $15,000 savings in the general.
Okay. So, you know, it's just the same smattering question is line 35, I guess, just looking at these I mean, latest documented numbers, looking at, and again, it's a few thousand here, a few thousand there. But it adds up when you apply it to the tax rate. So like, you know, the same question that I had on line 74, you know, it goes back to lines, you know, 35, 36, 40. Now, please, I recognize. So I'm just looking back at these, at the revenue numbers and it, it just seems like we're, you know, what I always do is compare the audited, the latest audited numbers to what we're budgeting. And if I see a significant disparity, you know, like the state highway, I guess I question why? Because it seems like we're, you know, we're building a little bit, seems like we're building a little too much cushion into the budget.
So I can answer 35. So the person I'm right here to throw out, line 35 is doing with tax collector fees.
Yeah.
They, I had a discussion with Carol, the manager, that the increase in '22 may have been due to the COVID relief programs that the state had funded. So we're not sure that that would continue on in these odd years.
And the same with meters? I mean, it would seem during COVID that people were parking less and they were in our fiscal year, 21 year, but then it kind of came back. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're like 10% less.
A lot of folks were. A lot of folks were.
Yeah, I think that the general philosophy on our, we went, we also went line by line on this budget and we discussed every line and the assumptions behind every line. And philosophically, my, my budget creation revenue philosophy is to err on the side of some conservatism. Because I'd much rather have a conversation about things looking good than having to stand or.
Yeah, the right, if things look good, we just transferred money prematurely out of the general. I'm the taxpayer that created the benefit.
They, they get a benefit of $15,000 in savings to the general fund for 10 years as opposed to pennies or maybe even a dollar.
So there's no plan to transfer additional funds from the general fund between now and the time we receive our next audit? Or there is?
Right now, we're at the 5% cap. Anyway, we drew the overage with 6,800 in that ballpark.
We gave them back.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's minimal. But we're at the 5% at that point to come up to compliance with the charter.
Right. But if we see ourselves headed towards the budget surplus, do you think we'd be doing that again?
I think it'll be up to the council. It's the council decision. We can make a proposal, but that's a decision that we can't implement on our own. So if there is a valuable, a valued use for that, we would bring it to the council and let the council decide. I think the, on that particular issue in the capital question we did, I think my first week here, what we weighed against is, and again, I don't, I don't pretend to, that anyone's personal financial condition, but when we looked at the 129,000 and what it meant to the average taxpayer, we got $15,000 in savings in city services for 10 years was more valuable than the rather minute change to the tax bill when you spread it across the entire single grant list.
I guess I'm confused. It would have reduced this tax rate by $150,000 had we not done that.
Yeah.
No.
No.
We made it out of the.
Right.
Fund balance.
Right, fund balance, yeah.
Right. But had you not transferred that money from the fund balance, the amount of money to be raised by taxes on this budget would be $150,000 less. So I guess, isn't it the same? As opposed to giving, you know, $150,000 of relief.
When you spread $149,000 and what the average taxpayer would see across the grant list. And we prepared this in the memo on that item, what it meant to the individual taxpayer. And we presented it and recommended it to council because we believed and council agreed at that time that the relatively minuscule savings to an individual taxpayer from that $149,000 were not, were not outweighed by the $15,000 savings of 10 years that in the general fund.
Okay. Good.
Motion to approve the budget was presented by the manager.
Which motion by council was it? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Can you see none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Guys have it? Motion carries and thank you so much. Yeah. All right. So that takes us to any upcoming business. So we have our next meeting is August 17th. 17th, you've invited us to a tour of the Westwood tree, right?
Yeah, yes, I encourage you to be there.
And, and so on the 21st, our, our, for the, the previews.
Sure, the one, I know a big item will be discussion on the strategic plan. So Jim will be here to discuss that with us then. We will have dedication for the annual report as well. And a linky of other agenda items that are skipping my mind at the moment, but those are the two that are present.
Any other reviews you remember the council?
And then I might just add that 131 will be the approval of the warning.
31st, that's the venue. And any, I see we have an exit real estate.
No, that's absolutely.
So it takes us to a real table. I'll start with council.
I'll pass.
So here. On on Saturday, there's going to be an event for many candidates who run for office in this current town meeting day between school board and city council. I encourage you to go down to Dela Condecan at 4 o'clock. There's, there's eight or so candidates for meeting group. So I encourage people to go down, talk to individuals and get ready to have a wonderful campaign season.
Counselor.
I think I will pass.
Counselor.
I also will pass.
Counselor.
There's a ton of events going on for candidates on Saturday. There's multiple events. So they're, they're beside the Dela Condecan event, there are other events going on in town meetings, the Alder Quill library. Plenty of opportunities to engage with candidates throughout this weekend. I just want to say happy new year. I hope everyone had a good celebration and that they are settling in for the real winter, which has finally arrived. And, yeah, it was just a really great meeting with the police advisory committee last night. We approved another few of the chief's wonderful policies. And it's just been great to have such a, sometimes we realized last night that a majority of the committee has actually been there since the beginning. Which, you know, just that we're having all these discussions about different committees. It was just nice that we've been able to keep our core crew and get a good amount of work done there. So that's how I spend lots of appreciation day and I will pass.
I will agree with counsel Boone on this, that I could probably be not electioneer. While, while we're here at the, at the council table, leave that on the streets. But I will, one thing I just, it's stuck with me in this meeting is just outside agency funding for me. And remembering multiple conversations with, I think, cost burdened household and really concerned about the number of things they've done about and the number that pass. And certainly that's the voters' will. But we have one of the higher tax rates in state. We may still be in the top three. And a big part of that is we have a lot of outside agency funding. And so I think it booms us as we think about putting items on the ballot to be cautious about that. Because, because it also affects, I think, city operations, aren't going to need that, the, the city budget. And so it's one of the reasons why I supported the outside agency funding policy. And like, I still stand behind that, but that even though. I, I still stand behind that, that, that even though we can be put in moments where it'd be hard to say no, and in this case, you know, again, it was a clerical mishap that didn't meet those deadlines. But, but when we think about adding new money to that list, I, I think it's worth, worth being cautious. So I'll leave it at that.
Mayor, if I could just, my, I just want to thank, I didn't get a chance to thank them after the budget. But these folks have gone through like a really weird and long process. And starting with Don, you know, he's our finance and now as a city manager. But really, it's right to everyone who's here today, you know, they start early in the morning. They'll be here early in the morning tomorrow. And really, we've, next, I'm going to document the hours we spend on the budget because this, these folks here put up a, a lot for me. And just want to thank them because I think it was really a financial miracle to get through.
They're so excited because they were invited to come. They have the privilege of coming here tonight.
And love on the center.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn with customer loss blessing by Council Stockwell at nine forty five. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes a.
Good night, everybody.